Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Common Council City Council May fourth, two thousand and twenty meeting. Uh, John will switch the screen to the flag, and I will say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let's start off with roll call, please. Rosemary, you're on mute. I can unmute her.
Oh.
There you go.
Okay, start at the beginning. Councilman Bishop?
Present.
Councilman Phillips?
Present.
Councilman Rob?
Present.
Councilman Gray?
Present.
Councilman Nutty?
Present.
Councilman Warner?
Here.
Councilman Barrett?
Present.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us online. Um, we have before you the minutes of the April twentieth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting, and this one special E-vote we had on the website. Is there any additions or corrections to that? No, with maintaining or take a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Councilman Phillips?
Aye.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yeah.
Councilman Nutty?
Yes.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Councilman Barrett?
Aye.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Approval of Resolution twenty dash thirty-three reimbursement for mayor fund supplies. Rosemary?
Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-three is a resolution to reimburse and the mayor's office supply in the amount of twenty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four is a resolution to transfer four hundred dollars and fifty-two cents from DOT other employees and to MBH other employees.
Go take both those together if you have any questions. No, we'll maintain, take an order to approve.
Clarence? And Diana?
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Nutty?
Yes.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Barrett?
Aye.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Police Department, Mr. Bolos, you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, I'm asking for permission to, uh, apply for two grants. One of them is from the US Department of Justice for a match grant for bulletproof vests, which we have to replace every five years. And we currently have missed grants for years. Um, and I currently have six that'll be due in, within the two years. That grant also provides, um, foreseeable hires that we can write into the grant, but that doesn't mean that we have to use it. So I'm gonna write in for two extra also. So that'll be a total of eight, and it is a fifty percent match on the vest. Any, any questions? It's due, uh, June eighth. We have to have it submitted by. This is the same grant we've used every, every year to, uh, replace bulletproof vests.
Did you say how much the match is?
There you go.
Fifty percent.
No, I mean, money, a dollar amount?
The, the vest here recently have been, for instance, the last vest we got was eight fifty. That include the outer shell and, uh, um, level three, uh, panels.
So eight fifty times eight, did you say?
Five thousand something.
Yeah, we'll have to replace six for sure within two years. It, it, it varies. It's not, it won't all come due at the same time because they're dated differently. But within two years, we have six current officers that their vest will be due. And I'm just writing in for grant purposes in case we hire additional within that two years. Doesn't mean we have to use it, but it'll be in that grant for.
An idea. An idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Randy, do you have a match in your budget?
I'm, I'm not sure. I haven't, to be honest with you, I have, I didn't check the, the match for that.
Well, I will tell you that.
We won't have any due this year. Pardon me, what, Rosemary?
Uh, the match is usually taken out of your budget.
Yeah, yeah, well, we don't have any due this year. But would they will, like, all of them are, will be due in the next, within the next two years. So that would be twenty-one and twenty-two.
So it'd be beneficial to try to get, um, two or three this year, and then that way you have two or three next year.
Sure, the probably the closest ones to expiration. So when we will take a closer look at that, but they, they won't all come due this year of two thousand and twenty.
Chief, I have a question. I'm gonna ask, what do you do with the old vest? Are they sellable or usable, or can we resell them, or you have to scrap them, or what?
Yeah, we, we scrap them. We won't take no kind of liability like that. Was there, they actually get outdated every five years.
Okay, I thought they.
There's no more warranty for them after five years, so.
I thought they did. Thank you. I'd answer my question. Thank you. What, uh, what makes them outdated?
That's, the manufacturer updates them in five years, so they're.
Okay, I mean, it's not the material doesn't fail or something. It's just that they, they're outdated.
They, they, that's what they deem possibly could fail after five years by humidity, uh, you know.
Exposure.
So, they, they break up, and they say after five years, there's no longer warranty. So when they don't warranty them.
Right.
It happened, the courts won't back us either, so.
Right, okay.
That's something you definitely want a warranty on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
So Chief, what you're saying is if they were about eight fifty apiece, uh, the, uh, grant will pay half of that, city pay the other half.
Correct.
Be about four and a quarter, four, four twenty-five for each one. The match.
And that's, that, that, it depends on the.
Roughly.
Well, yeah, sure. It's anywhere from seven fifty to eight fifty, and obviously we go for the, the lower price, so.
Need a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second, roll call vote.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Nutty?
Yes.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Barrett?
Aye.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Aye.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Chief, you wanna talk about the TRIP grant?
Yep, our, our next one is, uh, it's a TRIP grant. Um, you guys would know it better as OPO, Operation Pullover. It's the same grant that we receive every year to enforce different, um, traffic, which some are seatbelts, some are DUIs, just various, and it's all paid by the state through the OPO or TRIP grant. There's no match for this, so, um, no money match for it, but we have to apply for it. So I'm just asking for permission to apply for the grant to continue OPO in our community, which is absolutely effective in, um,
Right.
seatbelts, or speeding, or DUI, so I'm just asking to be able to apply for that. And last year, we, uh, got thirteen thousand, and we spend it or lose it. So as you notice, that we, we have a lot of OPOs through the year. And that's what we get paid from is, is this grant money. So, um, that's due May fifteenth, the grant is. So I'm asking for a permission to apply for that grant to continue OPO in our community.
Chief, that's no match at all, right?
No match, no money match.
Right, thank you.
Do I understand correctly that it's, uh, hourly wage, doesn't pay for benefits?
Right.
Right. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Evan, motion second, new roll call, please.
Councilman Nutty?
Yes.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Councilman Barrett?
Aye.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Aye.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Anything else, Chief?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Unless you're gonna, um, Mayor, if I could, unless you're gonna discuss where, what you discussed at the Border Works about our, um, ordinance enforcing, are you gonna discuss that later on?
Yeah, I planned on it.
Okay.
Unless you have something you wanna add to it.
No, I mean, just so everybody's on the same page as what you discussed earlier, and I can affirm to it, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be discussing exactly what we discussed at Border Works.
Okay, I'll wait.
Um, unless you got something to do, we can do it now. But anyway, let's move on. We'll, we'll get back to it real quick.
Okay.
Um, I wanna move on to, everyone received an email today, and, um, we did not have time to get your packets, as I explained. Uh, Jeff, I'm gonna need you on this one, so you might wanna unmute. Um, we've been working on this for weeks. This has been a, this has been a tough one. Uh, but we finally have a place where we are comfortable with, uh, with barn, with securing and retaining barns in Thornburg, uh, for, uh, to protect the city, to, uh, not to be more than fifteen thousand dollars. And right now, we'll take out a riverboat unless I can get some money saved elsewhere, which I think I can, but I think we'll go ahead and save to take out a riverboat for now. And, um, Jeff, you wanna kinda give a better statement maybe than I just did?
Sure. So Richard Hall is with, um, Barnes and Thornburg, and that's the attorney, um, who is essentially, um, getting involved in. He was actually bond counsel, um, and involved with Wayzata at the very beginning, um, when this began. Um, so he's already familiar with the contracts. Um, and, and he has, um, the ability, um, to, to have some significant connections and contacts that, uh, I think, um, give us some value in some of the discussions that, to find out what happens to that building, because obviously that's very important to the city to find out what happens to that building. Uh, the mayor and I thought it was very important to have a not-to-exceed number. Um, so, so that that didn't get out of hand, um, because it, it admittedly can. Um, whenever you're dealing with attorneys, it can, those fees can get, um, up there quickly. Um, but the idea that they're gonna be very strong, and we have a, a not-to-exceed amount, um, I think is very important. And, and I've had a couple of conversations with Richard regarding, um, you know, the, the budget and the idea of, um, I think he's gonna be trying to be very sincere and not, um, wasting taxpayers' money, and he knows that. He knows this isn't something where they can just try to bill as much as they can. I think he's gonna be very responsible in this billing. Um, and, and this kinda gives us the ability to have, um, somebody that's very dialed into this arena, um, allow us to know our options. I mean, that's the big thing I think here is I wanna be able to know what all options you guys have, um, so you're making informed decisions. Okay?
These are the guys who wrote the original contract. So they have a lot of, uh, knowledge of the contract before. They know very detailed. So in actuality, the learning curve is really not there. We're not paying for the learning curve. These guys are good. They know what they're doing. Uh, we've had several conversations with them. I was impressed. Uh, but they, they know what they're doing in this area, and we feel this is a, a way to protect the city moving forward. We may not need it, but we might need it, and this is a good way to protect us as a city and, uh, to kinda give us some direction. Yes, Mike?
Mr. Mayor, is what we're, the fee we're paying them, is that open-ended, or is that, is that capped?
That's capped.
Okay, I thought you said it was. Thank you.
We just want some good direction moving forward with.
I agree.
This is what they, this is what they do every day. I mean, uh, the, the learning curve would be, Jeff would be back in law school again, learning the learning curve on this, and uh, these guys deal with it every day, plus they know our contract. So I think between Jeff and these guys, it's a good team. Jeff's done a fantastic job with these guys, and he knows, he knows the questions to ask, so.
It's better to be proactive than reactive.
That's what we're doing. We're being very proactive here.
I think it's a fair price, too, Your Honor, or what they're doing.
Okay, well, we gotta protect ourselves, so.
Exactly, I agree.
I would like to, yes.
So are you gonna officially ask permission to advertise for fifteen thousand dollars for a riverboat?
Yes, I probably gonna need to do that.
You just need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Please.
And a second for Clarence?
Yeah. Roll call, roll, roll call vote. That's hard to say sometimes.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Councilman Barrett?
Yes.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Nutty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, guys. Um, old business, anybody have any old business before we move on to miscellaneous? Okay, miscellaneous business. Mr. Bolos will start.
I have a citizen that, uh, has a complaint, an Ernie Isaacs that lives at, uh, twenty-one oh four Western, where the caution light is. Um, where they took the caution light out, where they took the pole out. They left the, um, it's really not a cover, it's just a black round piece with wires sticking out of it. He was concerned about that. I did get ahold of Brad, and he's gonna take a look at it and take care of it or get back with me. I just wanted to let everybody know that.
I, I talked to him also, Bill. I talked to Mr. Isaacs also, and I talked to Brad also.
Okay.
He also had some, uh, some issues with the, um.
With the curb?
The curb, yeah. I can get with you, talk to you about it. Yeah, I, I talked to Brad about that, too, and he said he would take a look at it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I checked with Brad, and he said he would, he would check, he would take care of it, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure by where.
Right.
Thank, thank you. Any other old business?
I'd like to thank the Street Department for seeing the street sweeper out in these times, trying to get the city a little cleaner. Plus, uh, Police Department, I understand they've been pretty active with the, uh, city ordinances. I appreciate, especially cleaning up ninth and Western. It's a pretty eyesore. It was cleaned up now.
Yep, we, uh.
Yeah.
We do have a major problem with our street sweeper, as everyone knows.
Yes.
Um, for every day that it runs, it's broke for three weeks.
Very expensive, and very expensive.
They are, but, um, we've been, Brad and I's been researching a lot. In fact, I'm going Friday to Fort Wayne to look at some different types of street sweepers. Um, I, I'll tell you, they range in price. They're hundreds of thousands of dollars in difference, and there's three types of sweepers, so we're getting an education. We're trying to also get what works best, also at the best price. Not looking for a new one. We are trying to price one of those couple years old, but, um, we are looking to, we're trying to, trying to do some things. We'll be making a presentation before too long about our plans and, uh, ideas for street sweeping. Um, we wanna sweep more than just streets, by the way. Uh, we're, we're looking at equipment to potentially maybe even start sweeping our sidewalks. I know I probably shouldn't say that without, till we find the equipment with, that's there, but you drive down Fifth Street, and we swept it all, all the gravel by hand, and there was a lot of gravel, and we don't wanna put that back on the private property. We don't wanna put on the streets, so we swept it on the streets, and our street sweeper wouldn't even pick it up. So I think the state came in and helped us get it up, uh, because our street sweeper just would not pick it up anymore, so it's, it's on its last leg, um, ver, and they just said it was not rebuildable. I mean, it's not worth it. So we are going to be looking at several different ideas, uh, trying to find a, a, a solution that will be cost-effective, but also there's a lot more commercial equipment out there that can be utilized for multi-purposes, and that's kinda what we're looking at. So we are, I'll be gone Friday. We're doing some researching, and we're just trying to find the best piece of equipment, uh, to do the jobs that we're looking to do. Something's also gonna last.
Uh, something you wanna remember, uh, anything that goes into the gutter, uh, gravel, grass clippings, whatever, eventually becomes part of your stormwater sewer.
Yeah.
And then eventually to the, uh, river or waste plant, so um, just remind people that anything they're sweeping out to the curb, that it sweeps that up, that goes on into the storm sewer.
That's one of the reasons we got the parking off the curbs. People are tracking mode on. Uh, that's why we're, we're talking about people not blowing your grass, just a simple grass clippings. All that, Dave, you know better than anyone. It, it impacts our sewer system, and they're done, having to clean it out. Then it does cause havoc, especially gravel. Gravel's not good for sewer lines. So that's why we really wanna invest into a sweeper, uh, so we can get the gravel up. It helps protect our sewers. And, uh, and also makes everything look nice. Um, but we're really, we have a person who's in charge of downtown, just making sure downtown is clean, and they're doing a fantastic job. I'm want alley sprayed, uh, we want weeds gone, want everything painted nice. Uh, so we're just trying to clean up downtown, make it look pretty again, and make sure it is maintained well. Um, but we're looking for a lot of different options. We'll be making some presentations here shortly, soon as we, we get some answers to all of our questions, so we're research towns. We make sure we do the right research. Uh, even like that simple mower we just bought for the street, we did a lot of research to make sure we got the right one that would do the best job, and the rear discharge is working perfect, and, uh, a lot safer. So they were out mowing Park Road with it. Um, and it did a fantastic job, just dropping everything right behind it like it's supposed to do. So it worked great on the cemeteries, keeping them from, uh, blowing grass and debris and rocks all over our headstones, so I think it was a, it was a good decision, but we're gonna be moving forward with some decisions, because our, our equipment is very, very old, but we're trying to be creative ways to, to fund this stuff, so we'll be bringing all that to you once we get some answers.
I bring up, may I bring up another point, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nutty brought up a good point about disposal of stuff, and I would ask the citizens of this city that when your face masks are no longer usable, please don't throw them on the street, dispose of them properly, because I've already seen it happening. And it's a health issue, and it's a sweeper, and that would definitely tear that sweeper completely up, so please dispose of them properly. Thank you. Already seen it. It's very embarrassing, disgraceful to the city.
Uh, also, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, garden club's getting ready to put, uh, new plants and stuff in the, um, plants downtown, the big pots.
Yep.
They're doing that on Wednesday, but somebody asked me, was, was Brad putting in something, some other kinda flowering thing or something?
What, what I'm looking to do, um, I'm still trying to figure that one out. Um.
Well, they could go ahead and do what they're doing is.
Oh, yes, 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 cuz.
Okay.
What I'm trying to do is main, a lot of times we get the flowers put in. I want, I wanna be able to maintain them. I wanna make downtown gorgeous. That's my goal. I wanna, I'm trying to find hanging baskets for our lights.
Right.
But I'm trying to be, I'm trying not, I gotta be careful, because we're doing the sidewalk program. I don't know what the lights gonna look like next year, so I don't wanna spend a bunch of money if it's gonna change next year. So I'm meeting with Duke Energy. We're talking, we're gonna look at all the light structures and what we can do, but I wanna hang flowers from every single light pole downtown, double-sided baskets, and have wave petunias or something, so they're, they're beautiful. The person in charge of downtown, we're gonna set them up with a water tank and a truck, so they can put a little bit of, uh, Miracle-Brow or something in there, and then keep them watered, uh, so.
Yeah, that's been a problem, trying to keep them all watered down there, so they've tried to.
Oh, yeah.
They've tried to get the, uh, store vendors and stores to do it, and some of them do, some of them don't.
Well, half the store vendors aren't here, so there's no one there. So what I wanna do is make downtown attractive, to draw more store vendors. We manage the flowers, and we make sure they're beautiful downtown.
Right, okay.
So that's, that's what we're trying to do, and it really doesn't take that long to water them a couple times a week, so um, I used to manage flowers downtown Richmond. I had my landscaping business, and they worked very well, so the process works. We just, we just gotta get the investment, and it won't take much investment, just a water tank and a pump enough, enough hose wand to reach up and water them, but I want downtown to be beautiful, trash picked up, everything. That, that's my goal. Uh, we're trying to draw businesses downtown, and I want people to be able to come downtown, eat outside, enjoy our downtown. If it looks like a dump, you're not gonna get that, so we want it to look, look nice, so. Um, we wanna just clean it up and maintain it, make it look nice. Um, second thing, please, Chief, sorry. Uh, we were talking about ordinance enforcement. Uh, what we've done is in the past, ordinance enforcement has always been very reactive, and he would be in the office and get a call, and then go out, investigate it, come back, fill out the paperwork, and it was just a, a slow process. Plus, he's only part-time. We only had, we only, was it twenty hours a week, Randy?
Twenty, uh, yeah, so. Probably try to up that, though, at least, at least early on, spring, early summer.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is, uh, I went out and bought him a laptop, and, uh, yeah, now, now he's mobile, and so he can take the laptop with him and do everything mobile. Um, I don't really want him here much. The city hall, I wanna drive around looking, being very proactive, but I can do everything mobile. And that's his, that's his function, is to be out looking and, and be mobile, and, uh, so, and I have access to the, the Spillman software now, cuz I'll be checking it, and I wanna see, just so I know when people call in, I can answer. I can see the report and note. Plus, I can report to you guys. Soon as I figure out how to do this, it's, I haven't had time to get trained yet, so it's gonna take me a little bit of time. Clarence, you might understand, you might be able to train me, but my problem, my problem's just the time to get trained right now. But I wanna be able to look at the reports, so when people call in, I can educate. Right now, someone calls in, I gotta hunt the chief down, he's gonna look at it, we gotta call back, and it can take hours. Or now I can just look on my laptop, and I can know instantly what the, what the question is.
That's great.
Uh, plus, I just wanna stay on top of ordinance enforcement. That's just, that's my nature. Um, one of the things I do is, once I get people to their job, I said from the beginning, my job is to hold you accountable, do your job. And I do that just by, I'm not saying I don't do our job, but that's how I can look at it to make sure we're staying accountable, doing our jobs. And I wanna make sure we stay on top of ordinance enforcement. Um, we really wanna present a clean city. So that's what we're doing. Randy, did I miss anything from what I was talking about earlier?
No, I just wanted to confirm that. Um, look, today was our first day at full go for the department. Finally got everybody back and working, and I'm gonna push that also for the ordinance enforcing, make sure he's out and about, you know, finding properties on his own, including the ones that anybody else might see and call in that we might miss. So I think it's a great idea that we're doing the proactive thing. I think it's great.
Um, the proactive, uh, there's two reasons. I would, I can't stand being behind the eight ball. I like to be out in front, and I don't like being in a reactive position. Reactive position gives you negative results, in my opinion. If we're being proactive, then you get better results. I'll give you a perfect example. Um, usually all we do is field complaints. That's when we go respond. Uh, but by taking this proactive position, I don't know how many phone calls we received over the weekend. People just thanking us for the, the parking off of sidewalks, for fixing the potholes, being proactive, not having to wait for complaints or issues to come in, and, and that's what we're really after. Uh, you're always gonna get complaints. We, we can't catch them all. But by taking that positive approach, people see that, and that encourages them as well. So hopefully, by us taking a proactive approach, encourages people to take a proactive approach on their own properties and start cleaning their own properties up, so that's a long-term goal.
I'd like to say, too, that just think about, and what I was talking about earlier, just think about if, before you do something, or take a look at your yard, and, and just think about how you would feel if you lived next door to you or in back of you, or whatever, and, and if you have issues, you know, take care of them. I mean,
Yeah.
Sometimes you can live with, you live with that something, and you don't think anything of it, because you're used to it. And when you, when you really think about it, you might look at that and think, hmm, I don't know, you know, if I was on the other end, it might not be a good thing to, to see. So just kind of look at it through somebody else's view, and we're not trying to, uh, restrict, you know, tell you, we keep you from living the way you want to, but you just have to have respect for your, your neighbors and whatever, and, and it's a two-way street. But just kinda look at it from that point of view, and it might help a little bit.
So that's what we're doing on, on, uh, the ordinance enfor- So that's what we're doing on, on uh, the ordinance enforcement. I'll be able to start printing those reports off. Um, you won't see names or addresses, but you'll see the reports and what they are. Um, I've been working with, uh, I, I know I announced that our board of works at the next meeting will probably be here at City Hall. Um, after I did that, I got handed a uh, a new executive order from the governor. Doesn't say we have to. But it does say we can still utilize our Zoom meetings or, and stuff. So what we will be doing is watching the numbers. We will be making sure if the numbers spike, we'll probably stick with Zoom. I'm really hoping to do a city hall meeting here, but we now, we have the availability to continue on. So that'd kind of be I hate to say it, but it's a play by year. We, we don't know what's gonna happen uh, with, the governor's released a lot. And we're gonna go over a little bit of the releases here that we have for the city that matches the governor, but uh, we have the availability if we need to continue doing our online meetings, but what I'd like to get them over with, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'd ask, uh, how would you do social distancing if you're going to have everybody in one room? So you might run, think about that.
Yeah, that's a good point, um.
That's a good number of people.
Yeah, uh, th- there, that's the caveats. That's why we still have the availability to Zoom. So we will we gotta put some thought into that and that's a good point, Dave. So.
Again, just play that day by days what you're gonna have to do, Mr. Mayor.
It is. We'll, we'll brainstorm it. We'll, we'll get it figured out, but we just got all the, it we just got all the executive orders in today and we've been trying to decipher them with all our department heads. Uh, what I do wanna do is go over a little bit of the, and John's gonna release this tonight after this on Facebook. Um, executive order twenty twenty dash oh one. Uh, it still stands. That was my very first executive order. And that's for department heads to have availability to send people home if they're si- if they're sick or if they're presenting symptoms. Executive order twenty twenty dash oh two, um. It matches the family's first coronavirus act, so we just need to leave that in place for now. Uh, ordered sixty-six thirty-three expired, uh, but there's really no reason to renew it because it's covered federally by the Department of Labor. So there was really no reason to do that one. Uh, so eventually we will expire these other two ordinances, but um, or executive orders, but for right now, we'll just leave them in place. Um, so City Hall is uh, open. But what I'm asking people to do is still maintain our social distancing. I'm asking the citizens, if you need something from City Hall and you can do it over the phone, email, please do that. Only come here if you have no other options. We wanna minimize the traffic coming in. Uh, we still gotta protect everyone here, but um, it is going to be open again. Utilities office will probably open Thursday and I say probably because we're getting the screens built. Or the springs, screens can't get installed till we're thinking Wednesday to protect the ladies. The plexiglass screens you gotta have. Um, those are looking to be installed, we're hoping by Wednesday. So we're shooting for Thursday and we gotta have another glass in between. There's, there's several pieces of plexiglass that's gotta go in. Um, and also we're gonna maintain to four customers at a time. So you have two ladies that uh, or secretaries that take the payments, then there'll be one person working with them. One person line, everyone else needs to stay outside. I call it the lobby area, but there's two glass doors and outside. So the weather's nice, so it'll be fine for that, but we need to maintain the number of people in the utilities office. Parks, this is the big question of the day. Um, and I'm just gonna, this one here, I, I'm just asking for everyone to be very flexible with us because the parks are, they're very as you read the executive orders, they're all over the place, I'll be honest. And so each building is probably going to have a different open date because of the number of people allowed in the buildings. Um, so if you really, if you, if you have the Roberts Building or the Miller Center or, or the Mi- Miller Center or uh, one of the other buildings rented or going to be rented. Uh, please call the Parks Department. Catherine's gonna get ahold of people as well. Because you can only have a certain amount of people in those buildings and you have to also maintain social distancing. So it, it's gonna be tough cuz each building's a different number. You know, the Roberts Building holds more than uh, one of the uh, admin building in the Red Cross Building. Red Cross Building holds less people than that. So it's gonna be very tricky. As far as basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball courts, um. Let me get one of my many notes. Uh, they are closed. They, they have to maintain closed, even swimming pools. Um, through May thirty-first, it looks like. Um, so when we open those, I've got two different dates from the governor. That's what I'm trying to figure out. I got two pieces of paper from the governor. They both say two separate dates. So here's what I can tell people. We would love to open the pool. That's, I mean, that is I wanna do that more than anything. This gives people some hope. But I'm not convinced that we, we're working with the Health Department and I just don't know by the time we'd be able to open it. By the time school hopefully starts, it will be, I, I just don't know the answer to that. We are working on it. I'm just gonna say we tentatively want to open it. But we just don't know if there's, there's some things that's gotta happen. We don't know if it's gonna be possible. So I'm asking everyone just to be patient, work with us and uh, the day camps right now are still on tentatively. And I say that because if the numbers change, we might have to cancel stuff like that. Uh, but we're trying to get stuff going again. So if you have a question with a building or something you've rented or going to rent or want to rent weddings, whatever. Please call the Parks Department and see. Uh, see what you can do with your building and see what you can't do, or maybe we have to make some adjustments. Um. But as far as the pool and summer discovery and stuff like that, we will be making announcements. Um.
What about the public restrooms?
Public restroom is what we've done with those is, uh, I've had some calls about those. Why are they closed in the winter time? Um, A, they don't have any heat. So they don't get opened in the winter. Uh, B, when we were on stay-at-home orders, we have our employees not working. They were staying home.
Right, I understood that.
So what we did was when the grass started growing, we really didn't have an order to bring them back, but we started bringing them back to start servicing the equipment, start mowing and getting ready. And we will get the public restrooms in order, but we also had to get our employees back too. So uh, I've, I've talked to a few people over the weekend and we will be getting those open. Um. Process is not gonna hurt anything, but yeah, over the winter time, we have to keep them closed just for that reason.
And the playgrounds.
Playgrounds are closed. They're closed, yep. Basketball courts, playgrounds, water parks, swimming pools, uh, tennis courts, pickleball courts, they're all closed. So, um, once we get those release dates, when we come out with exact dates, we'll let everyone know. But um, there, it, it's hard because we've got two different dates and we wanna make sure we get the right date. And a lot of, we gotta see our numbers. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, what about the boot drives? Are they on hold?
Be honest, Mike, uh, we never even thought about that. I don't know why we'd wanna do a boot drive right now.
Me either, but I mean, I'm being asked.
You're, well, you're gonna be in contact with a lot of people. Even though it's two people standing on the street.
That's what I'm telling them, so.
And the cash.
They're saying they can wear a mask, we'll hit do it.
We have the cash.
Money is the dirtiest thing you can handle.
Yeah, yeah.
Dirtiest thing you can handle. So I'm just telling everybody, we're, it's, it's on hold right now, but I thought it was asked.
That's a good point, Mike. I'll be honest, I never thought about that one.
That's okay.
Put it on hold, I think.
Put it on hold. We'll, we'll make some Facebook announcements if we have to. What do you guys think about that? Jenny?
Oh, I was, I was gonna go back to what you were talking about with the executive orders. When you tell the dates, um, there's a really good resource that, that you can use on the internet and it, it gives a lot of details for each of the dates. So, so for each of the stages, it gives what's allowed to open and what's not. And um, it's, it's the, it's on the Indiana Go. So it's, it's backontrack.in.gov.
Yeah.
So it's a good resource for, like, if you're getting calls from people about what's open, like then you could kinda refer them to that because it is from the, the government website on. Yes, like that.
Thing is, I, I have this from the governor. I have this from the governor and they contradict each other. And I only get information. I, I don't, I don't get any information from the media cuz they get it wrong. And so I only get information from what the president says, what the governor says, once they send out executive orders. And for some reason this time, I've got different dates. So we've just gotta sit down and come up with a date. I mean, this came out Friday evening late, so we had literally no time to make decisions before today. And this more, we studied all weekend and we scrambled today trying to get stuff out today and they contradict each other. So um, it is what it is. I mean, we will work through it. Um, that's why I ask people, if, if, if we set a date and we change it, uh, just work with us, please. Because we are constantly in contact with the Health Department. I'm asking Matt a lot of questions. Hey, what about this? What about this? And we just wanna make sure we do what's right for everyone, which is a very tough call to make.
Yeah, Jenny's suggestion is a good one, uh, for general information.
Yes, but you got people on both sides of the aisle. And they're, 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 this group over here is passionate about their decision. This group's passionate about their decision. And no matter what decision you make, you're going to be wrong. And that's the way I, I look at it. So I know I'm gonna be wrong, but we gotta do what's best. We gotta do what uh, is the governor is giving us guidance on and that's the decisions we have to make. Uh, there are a lot of lines I'm telling you I will not cross. Um, and I believe a lot of lines have been crossed, uh, but I will not do it. Uh, so, um, but we also have to maintain our health and safety. I have a wife who works in the healthcare industry. We get it. We are probably so strict at my house that I'd say our house is stricter than anyone. Um, but we have to protect my wife's patients at all costs. And uh, my kids understand that. Um, I'm proud of my kids. They have not been around their friends and I can't tell you when and they are, I know it's hard on them. It's hard on everybody, but we, we are, we will see the end of this. I can't wait.
So for clarification, Mr. Mayor, the boot di- boot drives are on hold right now, correct?
I would say yes, by, I would, I would like to have more thought in that, but I would probably say yes, because you're gonna be dealing with, it's a lot of people driving by.
I drive, I agree with you a hundred percent. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
But as, as far as a date, as far as a date, when we release that, I have no idea. So.
I would, I, I have one thing. This is not, it's not about this, but I, I don't wanna neglect to say this. Uh, we participated, eh, particip- I participated or was involved, not involved with making it, that the nursing home parade. And that was one of the most emotional, neat things. I have, I, my stepmother's in one of those nursing homes. And it was, I mean, it was wonderful. It was, you could see the smiles behind the masks. The staffs were in tears. And I, and I'm, I'm probably gonna get emotional talking about it because I was, my kid, my grandkids were saying Mammo was crying halfway through town. I mean, it was it was just, it was wonderful. I mean, it was a great show and I think we have to give a really a head, a hands, hand to our nursing home staffs, all four of them, because we haven't had any outbreaks. I don't know that they haven't had any, I don't know if they've had any cases, but I think most of them are zero. And it's just tragic when it gets in there and they are absolutely doing the job above and beyond to keep, to keep those people safe. And I, I can't say enough good about them. And about that, I, at the parade, it was, it was wonderful.
That was more than just the nursing homes too. I mean, uh, I had a guy, he put a picture on Facebook, goes, I don't know what's going on, but this just made my day cuz when we went from nursing home to nursing home, we kept our lights on to stay as a group. And at first I thought, oh man, I might get in trouble for this. I had no idea.
People noticed it, yeah.
But people were calling in and saying that was the most encouraging thing. We don't know what's going on, but everyone drove by with their lights and sirens. I was like, good. I, I mean, it was, it was a good thing to encourage the community as well. I, I had no idea we were gonna do that, but it, it was good for the nursing homes. Um, couple of other things, I, I am working with Baker Tilly. Uh, they are working with, uh, we're, well, I'm not sure we're gonna need to hire them, but I am asking a lot of questions and we could hire them if we need to give us projections as far as budgets looking into twenty, twenty-one. Uh, third, fourth quarter losses potentially, gas. The first area is gonna be our DOT budget, but they were pretty confident that our twenty-twenty budget's going to be there, even though it might come in late. We will get extra draws. So if they, if they get dollars come in each month, they're gonna give us draws each month. So property taxes being delayed, uh, stuff like that, the, they said they're gonna do that for us. Uh, not Baker Tilly, but the government, um.
Is the courthouse gonna set that up?
No, Baker Tilly said the state was gonna do that.
The state's gonna do it, okay.
Yeah, um, that was a phone call over the weekend, so. And uh, next year, we are looking for, I hope we're wrong by all means, but we are working diligently. We're getting real close with our insurance. We are so close with our insurance savings, with our health insurance savings. Um, we, we could be looking, I'll just tell you my, what they told me is that eh, expected we're between ten and twenty percent reduction in general fund next year.
Oh.
Uh, so that's, that could be quite a bit.
That's substantial, yes.
It is substantial. Uh, but on the encouraging note, we get our insurance fixed. That's gonna be a lot of money, a lot of money. So we'll know more after this week what that number's gonna be. I got an idea in my head. Uh, but um, I know what I'm shooting for. I've got a goal. And we are working diligently on this. So, and we've been working on our insurance, health insurance since January one. I called him soon as I came in office. Said we gotta fix this. So it's been a long fight, actually. Uh, but we're getting, we're making some headway on that. So I'll be super excited once we get that done to make some announcements. And uh, last time council approved the website. Thank you for that. I'm excited about that. Uh, we're going to have a very, very interactive website. It's gonna be changing, fresh, always new. All, any resource you need will be on the webpage, documents, everything. So it's taken, it's gonna take a while to build. It's not gonna happen overnight. Uh, but we have a company that we're very comfortable with and we are excited to get this going. Give us a new look. We will have a new name too, by the way. Uh, so it's going to be different, but it's going to be exciting. So those are just a few of the things we've got going on here. Um, there's still a lot happening. Um, uh, I, I decided really last week, the week before, that I'm tired of the negative news. I'm tired of everything being shut down, taken away from us. I'm gonna focus on positive. I'm gonna focus on my goals. I'm gonna focus on my whiteboard. I'm gonna get busy again, other than just trying to survive the virus. And uh, we are absolutely doing that and I'm still being safe. I'm still being cautious and yes, I wear my mask. Sometimes I forget it and I feel like it, I, I go back and I get it, but um, we are moving forward on projects. We, we've gotta start thinking ahead. At the same time, we're being very cautious because we know what next year is gonna bring. So we gotta do our due diligence. We gotta still find ways to grow and advertise and market ourselves. Uh, but I'm, I'm very, very cautious with the budget for next year. Does anybody have any questions for me? I know it's been a long one.
I have one for Randy.
Yes, sir.
Randy, uh, south end of Central Avenue and south end of Eastern Avenue. There's, um, obviously there's a gentleman living in a camper down there along the street. Uh, there's a lot of business down there that has, um, vehicles with no plates on them parked out along the street. Uh, if you guys will take a look at, you'll see the problem.
Yeah, I think I know where you're talking about there. Yeah, we'll make sure they're legally parked or not parked and we'll, we'll definitely get on it. I know what you're talking about. The camper there, someone's living on the side of the road.
Yeah, plus there's semi-trailers on the other side too. And then, um, there on Central, there's a gentleman, I guess he sells cars, but he's got a lot of cars sitting out there that's no plates on and so on.
We're out on Central.
South Central.
By the railroad track there.
Yeah, just north of Integrity.
Yeah, right.
We would have a railroad goes right by there and it, you know how well that looks.
I'll definitely look into it, Clarence.
Thanks.
Any other questions, guy, anywhere you're here?
No, sir, I don't have any.
No.
Okay, um. Yeah, hold on. Yeah, hold on a second. I'm making sure. Make sure I get everything on my notes. I stuck it away. Okay, I got everything covered. So if anything else is covered, we can motion for adjournment.
Clarence.
Second.
And Dave. I'll figure it, I'll uh, wow, roll call.
Say that today.
Councilwoman Barrett?
Hi.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilman Phillips?
Hi.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Nettie?
Yes.
Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Hey, thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Everybody stay safe.
Stay well.
Stay well.
Take care.